Good evening, welcome to Athens City Council. Tonight is Monday, September 21, 2009. This evening, City Council will meet in an environmental committee and then at 7:30, come back and go into a regular session of council. Environmental Committee is chaired by Alahu Gosni, Member Gosni.
Thank you. The reason of tonight's meeting is to discuss a proposed solar energy project that the city is hoping to get some stimulus funding for the project. There's, with a lot of the stimulus money, it's come very quickly with very strict and fast approaching deadlines. The RFP for this particular source of funding from the state of Ohio was released on August 26th, leaving 30 days to assemble project plans and grant applications. And we have, soon after that, we were approached and the possibility of working with a company out of Columbus to facilitate a project came forward. That company is Solar Vision. And they approached us with the possibility of a third-party ownership, which we discussed last week, and I distributed information to council members as well on that, on the format of those and how they work, what some of the benefits are. This, one of the reasons that the third party is, one of our only options for this particular stimulus funding is that there's a 50% match requirement. And obviously, the city can't come up with that sort of money right now in these economic conditions, but a third party would be able to do the financing, so we wouldn't even have to worry about that part of it. With that, I'm going to let, we have a guest here tonight from Solar Vision, Thomas Van Cleef. I'll let him introduce the company. He'll speak for a few minutes and then introduce the installer they're working with, that, we'll talk about the project a little bit, and then we'll have an opportunity for questions at that point. And so, take it away.
Great. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. My name's Tom Van Cleef. I'm with Solar Vision, and we are out of Columbus, Ohio. We are acting in what is a brand-new marketplace, providing services that really weren't available or even contemplated a few years ago. What we are finding is the opportunity for municipalities, schools, to come up with the money to do a solar project. It really needs to be allocated to other things versus capital going to solar. On the east coast and the west coast, a power purchase agreement was designed, which basically says if you're prepared to purchase power from a solar array, a company like Solar Vision can make that work financially. Assume all the responsibility, all the liability, and all of the maintenance. But as a company, what we're trying to do is focus specifically on municipalities and schools. So we're not doing just any type of project at this point. And when we got the opportunity to speak to you and work with Dovetail, I think as a combination, it would allow you to have the green energy without the outlay of capital. So if you'll indulge me, I'd like to give you a few short minutes on who we are. I will not belabor the PowerPoints that people often bring. And the meat of it, of course, is the financial pieces, and then I'd like to answer any questions that you have. Solar Vision is young company. We're about a year old. We really were formed in order to put solar on a particular school, Worthington, Ohio, and has grown into a company as a result. Clearly, no matter where you stand on the future and what needs to be done, we need to make some changes in the way we're living. This will allow you to do that in terms of much greener power, in terms of reducing air pollution that would be required to create that power with coal, the greenhouse gases we hear about all the time. And something that's not considered is that the production and disposal of solar panels is inert. In photovoltaics, we're not dealing with any of the heavy metals or things like that from a landfill perspective. And we also are talking about long life, but 40 years is going to come. Also, in the last short period of time, mainly through legislation, the economics of solar power have changed markedly, so that a project like yours, a little under 200 kilowatts, could be funded, could be done so by a third party and have everyone behold at the end of the process. We offer you a price that's below what you are currently paying, both now and in the future. So during the term, we will always be 15% below what you currently pay for electric, and that means the charges that apply with that. The systems that we're talking about have a warranted life on the panel of 25 years. That's a long time. We have panels working into the 40-year period of time. There's some degradation in the amount of power they produce, but it is minimal. I think I pretty much covered this, but we very much think that we need to lead as civic leaders, as educators, and as elected officials to hopefully create a new world. It also means there's going to be jobs. What we're proposing, as you'll see, will require considerable expertise, and expertise that has not been needed or utilized in the past since this is a unique type of project. Why us? I think when you come down to the idea that no capital and reduced power plus the ability to make a positive change, if that's not reason enough for it, as a company, we've spent, I'm new with the company myself since the company's a year old, but it's based on and run by a gentleman by the name of Greg Kuss, who's started most of the green energy or been part of the organizations in Ohio, was part of the solar revolution the last time around that didn't get started. And as a result of his expertise, I've joined the company, we've had multiple other people join that are interested in renewable energy. But when it comes to just pure expertise, the gentlemen from Dovetail that are doing it on the ground are pretty much the only ones who would have more expertise since they're working with it on a day-to-day basis. I did want to let you know that we are approaching this from the standpoint of renewable energy versus this being the next gold rush. In reality, it truly is not. We haven't hit that point. At this point, it's possible to do. The ability for us to provide solar in different locations, in different ways, it's very versatile. It can be on a roof, it can be on a carport, it can be on a brown field that nothing else can go on. Very easy to install, very easy to repair. In most cases, the panels are only replaced, they're not repaired, since there are no moving parts. Breakability, you can stand on them, you can throw things on them. But however, I think if you took a cement block and chucked it hard enough, you'd do some damage. So they're not impenetrable, but this is by no means what you would think of as fragile in what you would think it'd be glass. That's not the case. And as I mentioned, no moving parts, so in that case, the, there's really nothing for the systems to break. I mentioned that we're focused on municipalities and schools, and that is mainly people who are not able to take advantage of the tax credits and the accelerated depreciation for these types of investments. It also is our goal to only deal with that marketplace because that's where our hearts lie as well. We have seen a tremendous amount of interest, way more opportunities than we can do. The list here is not complete, and it seems to be growing all the time. Needless to say, this is a relatively hot topic, but there's a big difference between being interested and making the moves that these organizations are. I think you'll recognize numerous of them. We're in various stages, and I'll be happy to speak to any of them specifically if you have questions. In the case of some of the municipalities, Springfield, for example, we are looking at very large ground-mounted systems, whereas this would be a carport. We have schools where it'll be sitting straight on the roof. They can really go anywhere, you can attach them, and metal-seamed roofs, which you see a lot more of now, are really ideal. You will have, no worry, and I say that in quotes since that, you hear that a lot, the array will be owned by Solar Vision, will be maintained by Solar Vision, we will repair it. It's certainly in our interest that it run most efficiently. We will, in essence, become your power company for the power that's generated by this array. And we will bill you based on the power it generates at 15% below what you currently would be paying. The terms of these are quite long, and that's also what makes it financially doable. We are talking about a 20-year term, initially under a power purchase agreement, where we would offer you, and we would true up on a quarterly basis or monthly basis, depending upon how you would like to, so that we are always accurate with the current rates you're paying. Over the second period of time, I mentioned that the panels last well over 20 years. They're warranted for 25. During the second 10, from the 20 to 30, we increase the discount since we have recouped our costs and provide you a 30% discount on the power. And we also will share in the renewable energy credits that would be available at that time. And we would provide you cash for those when they were sold. The number at the bottom is actually based on a system that's about a third larger than what you're talking about. This is, yours is 200 kilowatts, that million dollars is based on 300 kilowatts. So if we took that down a third, we're talking about the money that you would not put out, either for power, and in this case, equates to savings. A majority of that does come in that last 10-year period, but it can be significant regardless of how you look at it. I mentioned that I was going to be brief. I meant it, and I really wanted to kind of give you an overview and then allow you to open questions, and then we can talk about the specific design if you're interested.
So I'll start with questions from council members on this side of the project, on this part of it. Nancy, please.
What's the total price tag on this project?
The, as it stands now-
As planned. Okay, so 1.6 million roughly, right?
Yes, correct.
Okay, and how much of that is carport apparatus versus panels?
The carport is, I think, about 500, $456,000 of that.
And roughly a million in panels?
Correct.
Are the panels from China or from California?
They are here, made in the United States. As with the racking as well, we're very aware of that. And as you read, we are getting beaten pretty handily by China, but these are from Sharp, and they're made here.
I have some from Sun on my list. Is it gonna be, is it gonna be, why are they not at an angle? I have, you know, in my PowerPoints per class, I have the ones that are at an angle.
Well, they always will be facing to the south so that you get the most, and I think these are on a 10-degree slope.
Yeah, let's go ahead and have Mr. Bennett come up and explain the-
Well, I just have a few more questions, and I promise I'll shut up.
No, no.
No, these are good questions.
All the questions you have.
I just want to ask him a question about, I mean, you know, if it's because of aesthetics or whatever, I don't really care, I just wanted to know if-
But it's efficiency.
Oh, efficiency, okay. Are you going to be using an inverter to send it back?
Correct. This will be direct power inverted and put directly on to the grid and be used in the community center, recreational center.
And so, and so what we're talking about is really about a, at this point, roughly $80,000 electric bill, of which we'll be getting 15%, right?
Correct.
And that is outside or just inside, as you understand it, since you're the project designer? Is it just the inside cost, or does it include the skate?
Do they have skate? They have lights, they have pushlights.
Yeah, the pushlights on the roller rink or roller derby?
I think that that's gonna come down to you to decide.
Skate park, sorry. I never had a skater in my family. I may have solar panels, but no skaters.
Okay. You're gonna determine pretty much where that power would go.
Not me.
Okay. Certainly, what it will do is attach at the meter at that location. And based upon the design, there's an inverter that has been selected. I don't know if the place that it's gonna be located-
I don't need to know that, I just want to know if you're using an inverter and it was going back and that's how.
No, this will be usable power after inverted and go straight into the building or back onto the grid.
People out there in television land, it's important to know that the power company, at least for individuals, gives you back less than you think they will. Does that happen with you guys too?
Well, that's a critical part of how we size systems. If we put a system that's way larger than you can use and we have to sell that back to AEP, it does not work.
Right, I know.
Because they pay you so much less for the generation. We always want you to use as much of it as possible in that location because that's gonna offset your costs directly, whereas putting it on the grid at, you know, two or three cents is-
It's really bad. I mean, that's one of the things that happened to us last month, that it was-
Yeah.
Okay. I'm through. You mentioned energy credits-
Correct.
From the 20 to 30-year, you would help, you would pay back energy credits to us?
Correct.
Is that assumption that from year 0 to 20, that you would be taking those energy credits?
Correct.
Is that an already established market, or is-
It is not.
Okay, so you're assuming that some type of regulation or bill is gonna be passed?
We, well, we know there is going to be a renewable energy credit market, and it is going to be in Ohio, since we now have what they call portfolio standards, AEP-
So this is assumption on the 25% that Ohio is?
Yes, it is. Absolutely.
Okay. And so, over those periods, you guarantee the 15% up to the 20th year?
Correct.
Okay. And I just have, I have just a question about if you go out of business, what happens?
So, great question. We would be, we're gonna have an asset in the fact that you've got a revenue stream. And if we would go out of business, the first thing you need to know is that the array is not collateral. They'd be coming for us. Most likely, what would happen is that we would be purchased, and you would essentially have a new power company that would be taking the bills. The, of course, we like to say the likelihood of that is nil, but it's something you have to consider. There would be no stoppage in their array, and there's nobody that's gonna come put a crane out and take it off your roof.
And that was my question, you know, just the perspective of, not meaning to doubt you at all.
Yeah.
You probably have good references from the other customers, but what would happen if you do go out of business? And is there a way that the city, Law Director Lang, is there a way that the city-
Don't, I'm sorry.
Protects itself if the company would go out of business?
I would need more information than, I'm sorry.
Yeah, in the agreements, we're gonna discuss remedy.
Okay.
And I think the best way I can put it is, is that we would be, someone would purchase us, and that it would continue as a going concern. And, you know, we think about that being impossible. We've seen an awful lot of companies that we thought could never go away went away.
Right.
So I appreciate that as being a very serious issue. I think most likely that we would be purchased by a, like a direct energy, someone that is involved in the outside, the distribution part of the business versus the generation. How that would be and what it would be worth, I can't say.
One other question, it could, are there selected individuals that we can contact with the places where you've done business?
Yes.
That we can randomly contact them for references?
Be happy to provide you with references, the people we're working with as to how we do business, how Dovetail works. I think that that's a critical part of the evaluation. We're on a timeline that's just really kind of unrealistic, so we're trying to do our best, and hopefully I can answer your question.
Sure. If you were purchased, would the city's agreement remain the same?
Yes.
We would still receive the 15% discount?
There would be no way, no matter who purchased us or what happened to us, that that contract would change. We're talking about a considerable period of time. There are no provisions for it to be changed, and anyone that would take us over would have to do so knowing that those contracts were in force.
And I need to say something about price, and I've had a conversation with Mr. Van Cleef about this. The different areas have different pricing structures, different buildings have different pricing structures from AEP currently. So it's complex. You know, there's a demand charge, which is how much power you could possibly use at one time, and then charge for the kilowatt-hours that you use. And really, we'd have to, their company would have to look at it over the next few days, and we'd have to make sure that we had someone qualified to examine it, look at it. In what I'm proposing tonight, or what we on the agenda for our meeting, is a proposal where there are two contingencies for the contract actually going through. One is that there's, the grant is received, so obviously without that, the finances are, do not work as well. And the second is that there would be a guarantee from Solar Vision of a certain amount of savings over what our bills would otherwise be. So those are two contingencies for the contract to be valid, and it's, I'm not sure that it's gonna happen. If it is, if it is voted in tonight, even if it is, it still may not happen, depending on the next few days of their finance guys really crunching the numbers with our specific data from the community center and any other information that they need.
The thing that we do say is, you know, there are oftentimes lots of charges, there's generation and distribution and so forth. Our blanket statement is we're gonna be 15% below what you pay for power, accumulation of those. But we, of course, would like to be certain as well. And as you mentioned, in terms of us and the agreement, since they're complex, we would recommend the firm that seems to always be on the other side of Ricker and Eckler and Columbus have an energy practice that you might wanna, well, I would absolutely recommend that you have an external look. This is new, this is, you know, everybody wants to be careful, and there's no need to make a mistake.
And that's, for that reason as well, I wanted to, I believe in the draft ordinance, Alahu, that I'd gotten a chance to take a look at earlier, it does have some contingencies built in for precisely, that, because that'd be my precise concern on that. This is a 27-page draft agreement that I have received. I actually didn't receive this until this afternoon. It's a 20-year contract, it's 27 pages long, so I'm not in a position to sit here and answer in any detail, you know, what can or can't be negotiated into that contract. But I'm pleased to hear that we would at least have some time to be able to make that review prior to having the administration enter into any sort of an agreement on that.
And we would be, we'll support you finding out whatever information it is. One of the four principles is a partner of TAF, Sustanius, and Hollister. We can give you access to him, and he's a green expert as well. We can give you, if you will, impartial, external people. But whatever we can do in terms of providing you the information to make the decision, we'll do so.
Mayor?
Couple of questions. One, obviously, you're trying to get the grant so you can fund this easily, is that how it is?
Correct.
So you have some rolling cash?
Correct. And actually, with the carport portion, it makes it much more doable since the per-watt rate of an installation like this goes up quite a bit since we're paying for the actual structure.
Panels themselves and structure.
We could go out front here, let's say this was an open field, and we could put racks out there in the field, and it would generate the same power as if we put them on the carports. So it is, it's a construction project.
Okay, and I did spend some time talking to my Assistant Service Chief Director about the longevity of our parking lot.
Okay.
I think we're about, he says probably don't need to redo it for about seven or eight years.
Okay.
Just so, are these something you could actually adjust and pave underneath?
You'll be certainly able to pave underneath. These are gonna be cement pylons, you're gonna be driving, you know, just like you would have, you know, the ability to drive your car in to one. The cars what pays and not the piling.
Okay, and let's see. So, and if there's a change, of course, electric rates go up, you'll still stay 15% under it.
Correct.
That's the intention.
And that is, as I mentioned, you could say we want to true up on a monthly basis, or we could true on a quarterly basis. That would be your call. And we'll owe you money, or vice versa. If we do, we pay you. If you owe us, we're gonna charge you less.
That's if the rates go down, you're saying?
But the likelihood of that is nil, probably, but-
Okay. Just asking.
Yeah.
And over 20 years, do you anticipate, I anticipate changes in technology, so would there be something in the agreement, which I haven't read myself?
There is no provision in here for, if you will, updating of this array-
Okay.
And its capability. We're basing the financial, you know, all of our projections are based on what this array can generate. It is likely that in 10 years or so, we could see a massive leap in terms of its efficiency. For you, would it be, make sense for you to take the panels off the carport, put new ones? No. It would probably make more sense for you to do another solar project-
Elsewhere.
Exactly, with more efficient panels. Had the life been shorter, had the degradation on the panels be higher, I would say absolutely. At 12 years, we probably oughta swap them out if we had a major change. But I think that as time moves on, you'll have multiple projects taking advantage of solar, and each one is going to be the latest and greatest. And if this type of mechanism works to your satisfaction, you'd be able to have multiple projects funded by companies like mine, installed by companies like Dovetail, and you could make a choice on each and every one of them individually.
Okay, and I'm aware of the fact this is as part of the Recovery Act money reinvestment, and therefore there's anticipation of retaining and creating jobs.
Correct.
I assume you're talking about the local installers and-
Absolutely.
Do you have a number on that?
We're saying, and Matt can speak directly to it, because of it being such a construction project with the port, carports, it's going to require more labor than would just a general installation. So we're saying that one to two would be added, and we're also saying that the people that make the carports, which are based in Cincinnati area, would also be adding additional people. And so this is all going into, you know, our reason for the grant.
Okay. Okay, that's all I have, really.
We are running a little bit short on time. If I could ask Mr. Campitelli to just come up briefly and just say any of your thoughts, I spoke with you last week, just to let other council members know, the director of the Arts Parks and Recreation.
Good evening. Yeah, I met with the Advisory Board, they support us looking at green technology. I also have looked personally into that, and I think as being a leader in parks and rec across the state, it'd be kind of a nice thing to have and to kind of showcase our community center. We're already, basically for our size, a pretty good leader in parks and rec, and our facilities for our community are really vast, and would add, we could add a skate park, roller hockey, and the community center in on this array.
And again, the bills are running about $80,000 for electricity, I believe?
Yes.
Okay. And everybody knows it's parked on the east side of the parking lot there, it's not a lot of shade. This might provide some.
Shade is not our friend.
Well, except for the cars underneath it.
Yeah.
I want to clarify, you know, it comes back to price again. It would not be a discount on the total energy bill, it would be a discount on the power purchased from the installation itself. So it would not be on the total energy bill.
Right.
Mr. Butler?
Thank you, Member Gosni. Am I correct in understanding, then, that this would cost the city nothing? Because this is, this is coming from money from government, from the federal government?
It's more complicated than that.
Okay.
But we would not be paying for any of the installation. You know, if we have these documents reviewed by an outside law firm, of course, we'd have to pay for that. And as long as, and net cost savings, so, correct.
First name?
If you look at the net cost-
So the products, the solar panels and the carports are being purchased by the grant and installation?
We're gonna, Solar Vision, I think, if, when you take it all into, under one roof, we're going to-
Contingency.
Take the grants, we're going to put the rest of, all the money together and put the project in place. And as a result of the grants, renewable energy credits, and the money that you would spend from the power it creates, we're gonna then fund this 1.6 million dollars. But to your specific question, there's no outlay of funds for the commissioning of this other than to determine whether this is a good thing for the city to do.
And then you become our new partial supplier of energy?
Correct. That's right. And we would give you a bill.
Okay. Thank you.
Become a utility, and then we turn lean.
Okay, we are about out of time, are there any last questions? Hey, there will be an ordinance on the agenda later, and in order to fit the timeline that the state has given us, it would need to pass under suspension. So we'll see if that happens. You know, regardless, I appreciate you coming, and I look forward to, you know, looking into these types of projects, whether or not this one goes through or not.
Well, I think as, just to thank you for the time, I would say the exact same thing. If it's not this time, we're gonna be interested in the next time. If it's not this time, we're going to be interested in the next time. We're an Ohio company, they're an Athens company. So we plan to be here a long time, and we're just thankful that you invited us this time.
Great, thank you very much. Mayor, you have something to...
I thought maybe Matt went, any of the installers want to add anything to this? No?
I've got a handout here, it's just a really preliminary conceptual drawing. We will be, if there's movement forward on this, we'll be submitting more detailed drawings to Hanchinol, and they will create stamped drawings for the purposes of the grant, because the grant will score higher if we have stamped drawings. And this is similar to what they would produce. We're doing the very simple carport structure with Solar Vision for, effectively, police departments. And actually, the same thing you've done, they've actually, a week or two ago, they authorized their mayor to sign as well. So they're on the same track as you all, they're just a week or two ahead. So here's the same, same system. We'll do the stamped drawings in order to approve this, working on the grant. So what I have here is just, just to give you an idea spatially of what it looks like. And, you know, the scale isn't very good, but there's a little description of the system in the back, too, so you can see that. And then, you know, we're available for further questions over the next few days. If technical issues come up, you can call us, if financial issues, you'll obviously deal with Solar Vision.
I left cards for each of you. Please call me or shoot me questions.
Great, thank you very much. And with that, we will wrap up the Environment Committee and move on to our regular session of council.
I'll order this regular session of Athens City Council. We do have a quorum with all members of council present. Next item on our agenda is disposition of the minutes from the regular session held September 8th. Do I have a motion? Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes of September 8th, regular sessions have been accepted. Under Communications, I would like to mention again that we are now streaming on the web, and that if you go to the city website, you will be able to find that. Any of your, I'm sorry, any of the students, when you don't happen to be in your Athens home, but another home, you can tune into Athens City Council, just by going to your computer. So we're very pleased to be doing that, and I wanted to mention that for a few more times. Any other communications?
Town hall meeting tomorrow night at 6:30 at the Community Center, and it's on energy, and Athens, Athens and their reaction to energy and making energy more of a concern in Athens.
How timely.
Yes.
Any other communications, anybody else wishes to share? Reports and communications from other elected officials, Mayor Wild.
Nothing much, really. We're still working on the fire station. We've got some fixes in the progress, and I'm still trying to find out price for the broken bus. I'll get back to you in a minute.
City Auditor Kathy Heck.
No report.
Okay, Law Director Patrick Lang.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do have one bit of good news to report, or I hope it's good news, that actually, as of today, the city has reached tentative agreement with two bargaining units within the city. One is APSME Local 2403, which represents service workers in the city. It's a unit of about 55 employees. The other is a new unit within the city, the Code Enforcement Office. And the, because we've just reached the tentative agreement today, we don't have the contracts drafted yet, I would anticipate having those to submit to council's Finance Committee for next Monday's meeting. And while I won't get into any of the specifics until council has had an opportunity to see these contracts, I would at least note, because the one issue involving the Code Enforcement Office, which was reported on in local media last week, we had gone to a process called fact-finding. On one issue of the contract, we had reached agreement on all the one issue, so we went to the fact-finding hearing, and city council voted this last, at our last meeting, to, to reject that, that agreement, which are, that ruling, which had come from the fact-finder on that. And so there was one outstanding issue, basically, and we have subsequently reached agreement on that issue, so we have a full tentative agreement on that as well.
Law Director Lang, congratulations on both of those. Hard fought and a great victory. Thank you. Onto ordinances for third reading, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Let the other part slide. I have two requests, that council approve the August financial reports from the auditor's office. We have received copies of those via email recently.
Motion and second for the discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? They have been accepted.
And, Mr. President, I also move that we accept the treasurer's reconciliation reports for the last quarter, April, May and June, which are in the council office and are mailed out to us.
Second.
Motion and a second, all further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
They have been accepted. Now onto ordinances for third reading. Ordinance 109, an ordinance amending the Athens City Code Title 25 Flood Damage Prevention. Member Paul.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we pass ordinance 109. This is the result of a long collaboration between citizens, administration and the council. The council did hire a, an assistant to help draft the ordinance. I would like to say especially thank you to Eileen Getz, who has shepherded the writing and all the workshops and meetings that put together this ordinance to update our flood damage prevention Title 25. She's done a huge amount of work, and I really, really a credit to her and a credit to the collaboration and the cooperation that occurred between citizens, neighborhoods and businesses within town to put this together. And part of this will be to help, once this is passed, we will become with the putting in of our application to the community rating system, which will help reduce costs to citizens and businesses within town who right now pay for flood insurance. And as we do more for flood prevention, we will save more and more money on our flood insurance, and this is just one of the first steps.
Further discussion. Member Paul, congratulations on getting through a long process to where we are that will save the citizens money. All those in favor of adopting ordinance 109?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 10109, an ordinance amending ordinance 05508, establishing fees as required by the Athens City Code. This is introduced by all members of council. Speaking to it will be Member Bain.
Only if Debbie presses me to copy the ordinance. There's a total blank on that one. Mr. President, I'm of adoption of 10109, please. Second.
Motion and a second.
10109, changes the Title 25 Development Permit to $70. Changes the section number. And that's all I see. I can't even remember.
It's, it's, it's...
Right. It's a...
Well, then why can't you...
It's a housekeeping.
Oh, well, then I guess I'm the housekeeper.
That's how we like to think, you, Member Bain, as...
Many, many of the, in Title 25, when the ordinance is, was amended, many of the sections and such were changed in numbers, and so this is a housekeeping to amend the fees, the fee tables to...
To follow along with what? Okay. Is there further discussion? I dare you. All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 10109?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 10209, an ordinance granting a revocable license to West Banco, owner 505 Richland Avenue, for use of the city right of way, for a sign. Member Paul.
This is a renewal of a revocable license. The sign's already there, many of us have driven by it many, many times. I urge that the passage of 10209.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 10409, an ordinance banning parking and closing that portion of Court Street from Mulberry to Harpenter on October 31 and November 1, 2009, in anticipation of a large number of people converging on downtown Athens, yes, it is Halloween weekend. Member Butler.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adopt ordinance 010409.
Second.
Again, briefly, this particular ordinance is simply closing the streets and parking. A lot of these recommendations came from the Clean and Safe Halloween Committee, and also have proved effective in years past. Likelihood is there will be a few people coming to town that weekend.
If history is any indicator, further discussion? Mayor Wild.
Just a sideline, since we are having a large number of people there, we're looking for volunteers for the safety teams for that evening. And hopefully it will be a clean, safe event.
You might want to put up a sign-up sheet. Is there further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 10409?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 10509, an ordinance establishing a glass-free drinking container zone on Court Street and adjoining sidewalks between Union and State on October 31 and November, and November 1, 2009. Again, Member Butler.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adopt 010509.
Second.
And again, this particular ordinance, as I stressed in our first reading, is specific to safety, so this pertains to a glass-free drinking area. Thank you.
Is this really the Beer Garden? No.
Just this, just...
Correct. Okay. Is there further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of 105?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 10609, an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code, Chapter 11.04, vending, peddling and soliciting to allow vending in a designated area on October 31 and November 1, 2009, Halloween weekend. Member Butler.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adopt 010609.
Second.
This one pertains to, as you noted, vending, peddling and soliciting, which allows vending on the Court Street area and surrounding or exterior arteries, which typically don't take place on a normal weekend, so this is allowing that.
Further discussion?
We could also add that they, we will be collecting fees from those vendors and all that, that's small part of the little class.
That's true.
Thank you.
Other comments? Mayor Wild.
Okay, that's what council member Bain is referring to, is the fees, special event spending fees is about $150. There's no registration for chattel organizations, and for the regular vendors, I mean, it's $150. For outside vendors, it will be a $500 for one space. So this has already been act, this is very similar to what's been done in the past.
Other comments? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 10609?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 10709, an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code, Section 13.04.10, unnecessary noise in the downtown area on October 31 and November 1, 2009, Halloween weekend. Member Butler, I think this means that, who are now Mr. Halloween.
This would be his title, thank you, sir.
One I've held myself, so...
Mr. President, I move that we, we pass this ordinance, or, yeah, thank you, 010709.
Knocked your balance with that one, didn't I?
Correct. And this one pertains to noise, and again, there will likely be a fair amount of noise in the uptown area because there are bands playing and a large number of people, which don't typically hang out up there on a normal weekend, so there will be an excess number of people. So this helps prevent the police department from running around willy-nilly, chasing after noise violations.
Okay. Other comments in ordinance 107? All those in favor of adoption?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. We move on to ordinances for first reading. We have no second tonight. Ordinance 11309, an ordinance amending ordinance 9309, authorizing the purchase of a new salt truck for the Public Works Department. Member Nysley.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is an amendment of an earlier ordinance, 093-09, in which we appropriated money for the purchase of a new salt truck. You might remember the pictures earlier this year of our existing salt truck with the blade down and not attached to the truck. So we definitely need it. There, we need to correct the amount appropriated from $117,000 to $123,500.
Ordinance 11409, an ordinance authorizing design and construction of a school travel plan, project number 235. Member Nysley.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is to authorize an appropriation for $119,500. This will be for a grant that the city has received to develop the school travel plan, and the city will be reimbursed by the grant at 100%. So this, this ordinance begins the appropriation process.
Member Sands.
Could I just say that it's the Safe Routes to School Plan? Sounds, makes more sense to me that way.
Otherwise known as that, yeah, Safe Routes to School, correct?
Very good. Yes, Member Paul.
I'd also like to point out that the plan came out of neighborhood associations coming to the, to the city and working together and identifying areas that needed to be increased in safety for students to get and walk and bike to schools. So this is definitely a citizen-initiated and definitely cooperative program that came with neighborhoods and the city.
Other comments? Member Butler.
Additionally, our Streets Director, who now has a new title, which eludes me, the exact title.
Public Works.
Public Works, thank you. Director.
Streets are.
Streets are. Mr. Andy Stone worked diligently on this. I believe it might have been a year, over a year and a half worth of data collection and, and administrative details and meetings in which he was working on this grant, and did, as Member Paul alluded to, get a lot of input from both east side, west side, south side neighborhoods to make this happen.
Very good. Any other comments in ordinance 114? Ordinance 11509, an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to advertise and accept bids where necessary and enter into contract for construction of Key Drive, project number 240, and declaring an emergency. Member Nysley.
Mr. President, I ask that we consider this grant, or, excuse me, ordinance 0115-09 under suspension.
Second.
Motion and a second, further discussion on suspension only.
Okay. And we are asking for suspension so that the Board of Controllers can accept our bid to begin construction for this project.
Board of Control, that's correct. Other comments on suspension? All those in favor of suspending the rules on ordinance 115?
Aye.
Opposed? The rule's been suspended.
Mr. President, I move to approve ordinance number 01115-09.
Second.
Okay, and as explained earlier, this will be to allow the, authorize the Service Safety Director to advertise and accept bids for the contract for the construction of the Key Drive project.
One that we've discussed many times before at several different levels. Further discussion on adoption of ordinance 115? All those in favor of adoption?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance 11509 has been adopted. Ordinance 11609, an ordinance closing a portion of Court Street on Monday, October 2609, from 5:30 PM to 7:00 PM for Trick or Treat hosted by the Athens Uptown Business Association. Member Nysley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, at this point, ask that we consider this ordinance under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Reason for suspension?
So that we can pass this ordinance in time for the Uptown Business Association-sponsored event of the October 26 Trick or Treat Halloween.
Very good. Further discussion on suspension only. All those in favor of suspending the rules on ordinance 116?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance is now being considered under suspension of council rules.
Mr. President, I move for approval of 11609.
Second.
And this ordinance, as stated earlier, would close a portion of Court Street from 5:30 to 7:00 PM on October 26 for Trick or Treat, that's sponsored by, every year by the Athens Uptown Business Association.
I think it needs to be pointed out what a successful event that this one has become. The number of attendees is almost overwhelming, and... and a very safe place for trick-or-treaters to go. Mayor Wild, did you wish to make comments?
Yes, this is the second year we've done this. If you remember, three years ago, when there were about 400 kids uptown and the cars were still running, it became quite obvious there was just way too much traffic on the sidewalks for the kids. We changed the time. It's going to drop back from 5, was it 5 last year? It's down to 5:30. And again, it says from Union to Carpenter, so it's going to be most of Court Street at that point. Although I think my Service Safety Director said, correct? Okay. And again, this is mostly safety in that sense. It has a large turnout. And I say a lot of young kids, so, I mean, little kids.
Oh, I know. It seems to be a safe place that people feel very confident in taking their children for Trick or Treat.
And one more thing. I went to the pedestrian traffic, pedestrian bike meeting last Thursday. Oh, and I'm saying this just in response. One of the consensus that was hearing from many of the workshops and tables, eight tables, I think, five of them recommend closing Court Street as a pedestrian walkway. So I guess we can do it for events right now. That's where I'm sitting, okay? But, you know, that's one of the things.
That has been discussed before.
I know.
All hostile things to the mayor.
Yes. So anyone that is in... The mayor's number is 592338. Thank you, Clerk.
Thanks a lot.
All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 11609? Opposed, the ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 11709, an ordinance amending ordinance 07209, declaring certain vehicles no longer needed for municipal purpose. Member Nysley, what are you getting rid of this week?
Well, I think Service Safety Director Paula Horean Mosley explained it very well last week. We passed an ordinance earlier this year, 7209, that listed certain vehicles, one of which was a Crown Victoria used by the Police Department. At that time, we have, or we have since learned that there is another Crown Victoria that is probably...
Lurking about.
Lurking about, that needs to be disposed of. So we are replacing the one vehicle on this ordinance list with the other and getting rid of the vehicle that is in the worst condition and salvaging the one that's in the best one, best condition.
Further comments on ordinance 117? Ordinance 11809, an ordinance approving the report of the Assessment Equalization Board with respect to objections concerning the estimated assessments for sidewalk improvement associated with the Carpenter Street project. Again, Member Nysley.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. This is an ordinance to accept the report of the Assessment Equalization Board. This board, as you may recall, met as a result of several assessments that were set to accompany the Carpenter Street improvements made this summer. That board did meet in August, and we collectively thank them very much for taking, making deliberations and to the other city members who helped that process along. And as a result, they have, this board has moved to have the improvements... Actually, they've moved to have the report accepted.
Further comments? Member Sands.
Mr. President, I'd like to, again, thank the citizens who served on this board. They were Nikki Sherman, Ellsworth Holden, Larry Wood, citizens who performed a very valuable job in this instance. We appreciate it very much.
Very good. Other comments? Ordinance 11909, an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to advertise and accept bids where necessary for energy-efficient improvements. Member Gosny.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the first step in a relatively large project that would do energy efficiency improvements on a lot of city structures. The mayor's office has been working on this hard for a very long time, so I assume he may have some comments on it as well.
Mayor Wild.
Okay. This is to actually, to look and get an RFP out for trying to save energy within the buildings. You had, Perfection Group came by last week to give their spin on it. We have had, since then, I know Chevron has done a walk-through some of our buildings. As the RFP goes forward, when we actually have an efficient one out there, we expect more businesses to come up and have suggestions on what to, what energy savings we can do. Realize, of course, we're always working on that anyway, but this is how to do it, as a total building, or rather, infrastructure refit or renewal. And again, according to this House Bill 420, it's pretty much something that won't incur a large indebtedness to our books.
Other comments? Member Bain.
Mayor Wild, would it be possible to have, for example, our sewer upgrade checked as it's going on? I maybe should ask the Service Director if I did get a chance to talk to her.
You mean the plant?
Yeah, the plants, yeah. I was going to try and talk to her today about that very thing. But actually, I was sitting in a Friends of the Library meeting in the stench of this world. Yeah, it'd be okay, but olfactory reduction problems would have been better. So, you know, I hope that we have some kind of a trade-off situation going with that. So Burgess and Ico Rivers Designing could possibly take care of that too as well and make sure, sort of give us energy.
I think that's right on, spot on, and appropriate. And I agree, I was by there a couple times this weekend.
Yeah, it's really stinky.
And we are actually going to putting out a separate bidding process for that for the engineer.
And as you see it, you imagine it'll come a third from the general fund, a third from the two utilities? Or how are you going to proportion the cost of this once you have something? Chevron, yeah, that one I know about. Yeah, this one.
This basically is, doesn't come from, it doesn't cost us anything, really. We float a bond. The bond is being, doesn't fall into our debt category. We pay off the bond with the amount of money. As discussed last week, we would not put out any more money than we could actually recoup by the energy savings. Remember last week, the fellow was talking about approximately $100,000 a year for, and for 10 years, I would give you $1 million. So the idea is we pick and choose what we'd want to actually save, whether we want to go long-term fixes or short-term fixes. In other words, how fast will we cook the money? We can't borrow over what we will save.
But if they tell us we have to do thus and so, how will we pay for it? I mean, you know, will they get the money for telling us we have to do it and we do it and pay for it?
No.
Right, so how does it work?
I'm not sure what the question is you're asking.
The question is, they say, okay, you've got a mess and the water treatment plant needs to be fixed because the power is in trouble, so we have to pay to have it fixed, right?
Now, are you talking about energy improvements or fixing the smell?
Yeah, energy-saving improvements.
Okay. The idea is whatever fixes we have, we could only fix as much as it would save money, save electricity.
With the bond.
With the bond.
That's kind of a problem, I guess.
Why is that?
I mean, I'm not sure.
I think the question Bill asked at that time is what happens if we don't get the savings? And they said they would actually pay the difference. It was a performance bond, I believe.
Well, I mean, I just think that we have the ongoing maintenance, which, and this will be certainly good and part of that. I just wanted to know what happens if we, so it's...
Do technology changes, requirements change?
Yeah, among other things. I mean, we're dealing with plants that are 25, 30 years old, at least, the rest.
We don't have to include that in the mix, as I say, we have...
We have to. I mean, that's where our biggest energy problems are. I'm just kind of puzzled about how it will work.
That's one of the big energy problems, yes. $300,000 in electricity, I understand.
We talked about this last year. I mean, I'm all in favor of it, but I just, I just don't know how that thing will work. I know it isn't in our bonding thing, but I just, all right, we'll wait and see.
Well, okay. The conversation I had with Lands and Buildings Director George, today Chevron walked through. They didn't even look at the parking garage. To me, that's, you know, so therefore, you're going to have companies that are going to look at certain items. And part of their response to the RFP is what they want to include in the mix or the fix. True, it's a large amount. I think the Perfection Group that came up, when they're quoting that $100,000 a year, I suspect they are looking at energy savings on both treatment plants, wastewater and water. I don't, I think the second string for them, again, is the parking garage. They are looking at the 24-hour operations. That is a 24-hour operation. And the reason why I'm conscious of it, I stare at it with the lights on all night long. At the same time, we don't, we can choose, pick and choose what we want to do. And if it's too costly, then we have to make that decision whether we want to grasp just the low-hanging fruit or a mixture of both, or the real intensive ones.
Or if we have to do things that aren't really going to be energy-saving.
That's, that was the discussion you just had. That's the odor problem you're just discussing.
And the odor problem is really important.
Well, the fixing of, the getting a better-running wastewater treatment plant is important. This is really more like committee meeting discussion, but I've approached...
Some time ago.
What?
Some time ago, it was more of a committee discussion.
We had it a year ago. I mean, I just think that it's very hard to comprehend how this exactly will work.
It will be expensive if we do anything.
And you'll be back to us at repeated times to talk about this.
We betcha.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion on ordinance 119? Yes, for Gosny.
I just wanted to mention the schedule here, at least the planned schedule. This RFP would be issued sometime in November if the council approves it. And a selection of provider would happen maybe a couple months later. And then by April, city council would see a proposed contract. So we would see the different projects that were being proposed, and we would have a chance to, I assume, ask for projects to be added or taken away at that point.
I think that's important, that we'll have a structure and an idea that what we're going to actually have to refix and rebuild and what the timeline is. I mean, their concept was 15 years out, but the question is, do you really want to have something that doesn't do a payback for 15 years? Unlike the photovoltaics we're talking about, it's 30 years plus out, in one sense. But that's it, that's not, you know, to say energy-efficient by solar panels is not the, is not the low-hanging fruit at this point. It's a high-tech solution.
Further discussion? Ordinance 12009, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a solar power purchase agreement, SPPA, and a solar license agreement, SLA, for a photovoltaic solar energy installation to be cited at the Athens Community Center and declaring an emergency. Member Gosny.
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, I would like to move that we consider ordinance 012009 under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Motion and a second. Further discussion on suspension only? Reason for?
The purpose for the suspension is the expedited timeline that the state of Ohio has outlined for these stimulus grant applications, a deadline of September 25th for this particular one.
Other comments on suspension? Member Bain.
Do we have to enter into the purchase agreement in order to go forward? I mean, is that required absolutely? Because it seems we're totally locked in at this point in time without really... I just wondered, is it necessary, or do we really only have to do the resolution?
Member Gosny.
That's exactly what I was, been struggling with the past week, for the past week, trying to figure that out. And finally, I talked with Ohio Department of Development today for the second time, and the question was, they don't know. So the people that are making the decisions don't know. It will certainly put our application at the top of the pile when they're analyzing them for competitiveness. And I understand exactly what you're saying, and I have those same feelings. The contingencies that are built in here, the first, well, those maybe should be discussed later. But it has contingencies that the price will be a net savings and that it's only effective as a grant.
The discussion was limited to suspension.
It is a suspension and an emergency, and we are dealing with something that's in the future. I just wondered if you really wanted to ask for a suspension or read it another time? I don't know. I mean, I don't know that I can support a suspension. You want to go talk about the resolution, that might be a different matter, but...
Other comments on suspension only? Let's have a shorthand. Member Sands. All those in favor of suspending the rules on ordinance 120?
Suspending the rules.
Suspending the rules. We have, I'm counting five to two. Is it not suspended?
No.
We can read it next week. Member Gosny, did you wish to speak to the merits of ordinance 120?
We took half an hour earlier, so I won't spend any more time on it tonight. And we have the resolution at the end of the meeting as well, related to this, so.
Very good. On to resolutions for first reading. Resolution 0809, a resolution supporting the efforts of the Athens Conservancy to purchase attractive land to be designated as a nature preserve and offering access to the property through the Strouds Ridge Preserve. This is introduced by all members of council. Speaking to it will be Member Paul.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a three-reading resolution, and I request that it would be considered under suspension of rules.
Tonight.
Tonight, please.
And do you have a second?
Second.
Reason for the suspension?
Right now, the entity that is doing this is Athens Conservancy. They are in the process of writing a grant to the Clean Ohio Fund. They would like a letter to put in with their grant application, which is due the 30th of September. And they have been working on this for quite a while. The reason it's come to this point to the city council is the communications from the Clean Ohio Granting Authority requiring access to this piece of property.
Further discussion on suspension only? All those in favor of suspending the rules on resolution 0809?
Aye.
Opposed, the rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we adopt resolution 0809.
Second.
This is a resolution, it would be a letter of support that would go in with the Clean Ohio Grant that Athens Conservancy is putting in to purchase attractive land, which is out on East State Street. And the purpose of this grant is to produce, to preserve the land as a nature preserve. The piece of property in question is, would be landlocked, and Clean Ohio Grant requires that it have some kind of access. They're going, they're asking us to support the grant application and that at a later date, that we give them a right-of-way through our property, the Strouds Ridge Preserve. So at this point, it's just basically a letter of support and that we will consider a right-of-way in the future.
Other comments on resolution 0809? Member Bain.
I was in communication with one of the people in the Conservancy, and I am still not clear exactly how this will work. And so I'm glad that Christine is going to have it come back a different way. But I don't think it's at all clear that it will be a right-of-way. It might be an easement. You know, I think that there's some disagreement about that. You know, one of the, I went, she's suspending the rules, because I really wanted to see that track, you know? And I think I have it, but it's not your fault, because we're dealing with an entity. Also...
We have somebody from Athens Conservancy here.
I have no problem with it, but I would like to say something to Terry Smith. Terry Smith, this is one of many different attempts to preserve our view shed. We have spent hundreds of thousands of dollars in this city preserving view sheds. Just thought you'd like to know.
So there.
So there.
Member Paul, did you wish to invite someone to speak?
There's other questions. Zay likes to hear more to answer questions, unless you have some kind of...
Other comments from council members?
I'm not going to put her on the spot here.
Number what? Mayor Wild? Oh, to have what, maybe I don't do that.
Okay, this, essentially, we did look at some of the mapping of this area. We own, of course, the right-of-way of Hope Drive goes all the way back. And what we're talking about is an easement that will cut through to this property and size and shape to be determined that would just give you an easement to Hope Drive at that point. We looked at the maps. I did not bring them. I don't know if you guys got a copy or not, somewhere along the line. But again, this is, this is about 70 acres that will actually tie into other portions of the property that we have. So again, it's competitive. We've done the Clean Ohio before, as you know, along that ridge top. And it's really not a...
It's a wonderful view shed, isn't it?
It's, well, yeah, I guess. But it also is not costing us anything except that commitment to an easement.
And I do remember a field trip a number of years ago with the previous administration where I think this area was pointed out as a possible access to, I remember Mayor Abel doing that. I think you were there, Nancy.[1758.06]
I was.
Okay.
So, I guess.
So, this has been something that we have had an opportunity to look at, but that, man, I'm going back seven years for that, or-
I just don't know.
Yeah, okay.
And it will come back as an ordinance when we do the actual language.
Do we have other comments? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 0809?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. I said ordinance, it's resolution. Resolution 0909, a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. Member Sands.
And I need to ask, or, is this a, is this a three-reading resolution?
It is.
But we do-
But we're going to do it in one and in suspension, it sounds like.
It sounds as though we have a deadline here that we need to suspend.
Do we have a second? Second for suspension? Okay. Motion and a second to suspend. Reason for suspension, again?
In order to meet a schedule, this needs to be submitted to the county auditor's office by October 1st.
Further discussion on suspension only? All those in favor of suspending the rules for resolution 0909?
Aye.
Opposed? The rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, I move adoption of resolution R0909. This is a resolution from the Athens County Budget Commission, estimating that we would, the city, Athens City, would receive $845,629 from Athens and Kanan Township, and then later in the resolution, it talks about how these taxes would be levied and collected.
Other comments? All those in favor of adoption of resolution 0909?
Aye.
Opposed? The resolution has been adopted. On to a one-reading resolution, I dare you to try to suspend the rules on this one. Resolution 1009, a resolution in support of a solar power purchase agreement, SPPA, for a photovoltaic solar energy installation to be sighted at the Athens Community Center. Member Gosny, good luck with this one.
Thank you, Mr. President. This was my backup to, in case the state decides that they will accept applications with a resolution support as opposed to an actual contract. I probably don't need to go through it, it simply says that the city of Athens is interested in entering into this type of an agreement with Solar Vision, and that we support their grant application for the associated project.
Other comments on resolution 10? Yes, Member Paul.
I commend Member Alahu Gosny, because he has been working diligently due to the short timeframe, and that he has seeked support from various entities, including the Recreation Advisory Committee and Rick Campagnelli, and that going out and getting public input via these advisory committees and other committees was quick, a quick turnaround, and I was quite impressed with that. There is concern, you know, it's unfortunate that this is such a quick stimulus grant, seems like all of them were very quick this summer. But I, I support this, because I think that it's a good public-private partnership, and that it does support job creation within Athens County, which we seek to try to increase jobs in this area, especially in our green and solar industries, which seem to be poised on the verge of exploding with more stimulus funds and other creation of markets through those.
Other comments? Member Butler.
Thank you, sir. I too support this resolution, and appreciate Member Gosny's hard work, I know a lot of phone calls and research was put into this, and I applaud his efforts. Again, Director of Arts, Parks and Recreation, Rich Capitelli, is offering support too, and acknowledges that this would enhance the community center and its overall vision. So, also acknowledging the support from the REC advisory board too, I think is worthwhile. Thank you.
Other comments? Member Sands?
I have concerns about the 30-year life of this project as a carport on the parking lot of the community center. I know Mr. Campitelli and the board have both expressed support, but in the past, there have been comments made about other uses for that area, and I'm just not sure that we've looked 30 years out. And it's difficult to do in this short time, and that's why I'm, it's why I couldn't support the other ordinance, and I'm having problems with this resolution because of the timeframe. It's not allowing us to investigate all the possibilities that could come in 30 years.
Any other comments? Member Bain.
My only, my concerns I've expressed earlier, I would like to suggest that the $10,000, $11,000 payback is pretty meager for the amount of land and space that's under development and a lot of really many uses, and so I'm sort of echoing Jim's position on this. And I did tell Alahu that earlier, and it's one of his main calls.
Are there any other members of council wishing to speak to this issue? Anyone else? You know, I have to echo the one thing that was alluded to here, it does seem like it's been a summer of suspensions. But I don't think we've had a lot of choice. We can either walk away from a lot of money and a lot of projects, or suspend the rules. It's very unfortunate that this gets hit with it so quick, because I think all of us believe that more public input creates a better product. And I, from the conversations you and I have had this week, I do know that you have grieved over not being able to have that kind of time and input, and none of us like doing business this way, and I just wanted to make that statement, I wasn't hearing that come out loud and clear. Well, with that said, all those in favor of resolution 110?
Aye.
Those opposed?
I'll go, I have a reservation.
Okay, so, I'm reading that as six one.
You want to make it unanimous? No.
No. He only needed four. Okay. Announcements and other business? What do we have that we'd like to talk about next week? Any meetings, any? Of course.
Finance and personnel, we have some issues to begin discussing.
I have a feeling that one might get good. Okay. Any others? Okay. I have no other announcements. Mayor, did I see the service safety director?
I'd like to reserve the right to work with Member Gosny about a possible environment committee next week.
Okay.
That might not have been worded correctly.
We will take it. Next item on our agenda is an opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items and city services that we did not cover on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone wishing to speak before city council tonight? Seeing none, the next item on our agenda is an executive session. The purpose is for collective bargaining and pending litigation. So, after the executive session, the only item on our agenda will be an adjournment. An executive session takes a motion, a second, and a roll call vote. Do we have a motion?
I motion that we go into executive session.
Second.
And who would you like to insist?
All members of council, the city auditor, the service safety director, the mayor, the president would like to be here? Law director?
Oh, yeah, I guess so.
I think we better have one with us. Okay, Member Butler?
Aye.
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 Okay, that clock says 7:20, when it says seven, or 8:20, when it says 8:35, I'm going to ask everyone to leave. So, you've got about 15 minutes to ask questions of your council members and administration. We are adjourned.